Wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this Monday, March 7th of 2022. If we would please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, tonight, Lord, we just want to give thanks, first of all. Lord, have you blessed us here in Lee County and Sanford and the town of Broadway in our great state. Lord, we just ask for your guidance and wisdom tonight. Lord, if we make decisions for this county, Lord, let it be in your will and your way. Lord, just help the folks in Ukraine. Lord, we just ask for the protection of them. God, help us with the do as we do our business tonight for the county of Lee. In your name we pray, Father, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank everyone for attending this evening. Just a administrative note, was on the road today and heard on the radio that we can expect severe weather this evening. And just a reminder, this is North Carolina's 2022. Severe weather preparedness week, starting on March 6th through the 12th. If we have to go seek shelter, the interior rooms over here where the kitchen is, we have this room here, and of course, the bathrooms are inside the building. There are safe locations to go to. So, we'll leave that at that, and hopefully, we will not have to go through that drill. Do I have any additional items to add to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I've been asked to ask the board to add the request from the city of Sanford for the county commissioners consider funding to OMI in the amount of $315,000. Put that under new business as letter Roman numeral 5A, the request of the city Sanford, donation to OMI. Anything else?
I've got a question regarding the items on the old business. Is there any reason all of these can't be placed on the consent agenda? These are things we've already covered and discussed.
Are you making motion, place them on the consent agenda? Which item, sir?
All five of them.
All five of them. Is there any, is there a need to discuss letter E?
So, I would have one request on the Horton Pool Bath House contract and the pool renovation contract. For both of those, I just wanted to make it clear to the board, we're asking for approval for the chair to sign those contracts. However, that's subject to the contractors signing the federal contracting provisions. That is mandated through the ARPA funding, and we have provided those federal contracting provisions to both of the contractors, but have not received their signatures and hand back. So, we only authorize the chair to sign it once we have those received back. So, if the board can just be clear that if they approve that, it is still subject to receiving those federal contracting provisions.
Is that clear?
That's right.
Any questions on that provision regarding those two contracts? So, we can still put it in consent agenda?
Yep.
Anything else, Madam Barrister?
Not really.
Alright, motion's been made to place old business items 4, A, B, C, D, and E on the consent agenda with an annotation that item C and D are possible items that are not complete.
Correct.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll make those items M, N, N, O, P, and Q, I believe, under. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. My screen faded again. We have a public comment from Mr. James Womack. Sir, if you would please address the audience and state your name, your address as well, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Womack, and I live at 1615 Boone Trail Road here in Sanford. Three topics for this evening: the upcoming budget process, the election integrity issue, and funding for our declining public school system. First, we're experiencing unprecedented growth stimulated by the Trump economy and superb Republican leadership on this board the past year or so. You are now in a position to be good stewards and return some of this windfall to our taxpayers. We are still the highest taxed county in central North Carolina, and those who live in the city of Sanford bear an even greater burden. We are taxed to the gills. I strongly encourage commissioners to do the right thing and provide a full 5% tax decrease to our citizens, something never before done in this county outside of a reval year. If you give back four and a half cents this year, you will make history. You should do that and demonstrate your commitment to fiscal conservatism. Secondly, I made a reasonable request recently of our Board of Elections to use county taxpayer-owned voting equipment in our Board of Elections office for the purpose of making supervised training videos so poll observers and judges can be trained statewide on important election integrity matters. As president of the North Carolina Election Integrity Network Insight, it is my job to train over 5,000 observers statewide, and these training videos were pivotal to that end. Yet, election board member attorneys Jonathan Silverman, Susan Feindl, and Shannon Gurwitch all neglected to consider the request. I appreciate Magistrate Harry Strifler for introducing the motion to approve the request, yet these three attorneys, Silverman, Feindl, and Gurwitch, demonstrated genuine lack of concern about election integrity through their neglect and even seeking more information about the request. Moreover, Silverman should be reprimanded for his public insistence that the Board of Elections will not give back the $300,000 surplus they had from budget last year. That $300,000 is a half cent on our tax rate. Silverman should be reminded those aren't his dollars, they are our dollars. I hope commissioners keep that in mind when the BOE budget comes your way in about a month or so. Finally, I wish to remind the commissioners the principal impediment holding Lee County back from achieving optimal growth and prosperity is our failing public school system. I urge commissioners not to provide any increases in funding over last year, given our continued decline in average daily maintenance or headcount, the board's ridiculous renewal of the superintendent's contract for two more years without any good cause or hope for improvement, and because the school board has no objective plans to share with you about improving achievement or growth. Why throw good money after bad performance? Make the schools come to you and present their short and long-term plans to improve performance, or tell them no more money. Tell that arrogant board chairman she is wrong when she claims it is none of your business how they spend our tax dollars. This county will never reach its potential with the status quo our board is striving to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to new business, we have the request from the city of Sanford for donation to the Outreach Ministries Incorporated of $315,000. Any discussion?
You want me to discuss that, Mr. Chairman?
I believe so.
I'll go ahead and introduce it. I was approached by the mayor and city manager a little over a week ago about a group of people that had stepped forward and were going to provide funding for the homeless shelter in honor of Sam Warnham. The total amount committed by this group was $1.1 million and could grow. So, the city met with me to discuss grant opportunities and funding opportunities that OMI would now be qualified for with that donation, and they're still a little bit short from being able to qualify. They have to have a certain amount of money on hand, and so, the city communicated to me that the shortfall was around $630,000, and they asked us to pick up half. And last Monday night, or last Tuesday night, excuse me, they voted to fund the $315,000. Still some discussion amongst staff about making sure that if the board wanted to do that, there was appropriate legal way to do that. As we've been discussing during and through the ARPA funding issues, it's difficult for the county to give nonprofits or outside agencies funding for them to build something. Build a building, you know, is against actually state law, not federal law, so we have to work a way to actually enter into a contract with either the city or OMI to provide services to the county. So, we're trying to figure out how to do that, and but, you know, the city's made that commitment and charged the staff with figuring, you know, how to legally do that. So, that's what I know to this point, sir.
Any questions of the manager?
I have a motion to offer.
We have a motion?
I move we appropriate up to $315,000 to OMI, and once OMI has received grant funding to build a new homeless shelter, and our staff has determined that the appropriate legal method to provide the funding and any documents created to effectuate the transfer of the funds will be brought back to the board, Lee County Board of Commissioners, for final approval.
Does everybody understand the motion? That was a lot. Any discussion?
No, I think we asked, we asked, we asked the city, well, two, few things here. One, I think when the city was discussing this the first time, there was a lot of citizens in that area that came out and spoke against it, which, which makes me concerned. Not necessarily the project, but its location. Number two, we asked the city to help us offset something with economic development when it came to railways, and that was to share liability if anything went wrong with a new business that was coming in here. Very unlikely that any of us had to pay anything out to the railway. And that was for 60,000? I forget.
150.
So, half each?
Half each would have been 150, so the total was 300.
300, and the city said no.
But the city did come back and say yes now.
Now. So, the, the other main thing is, um, there's, I mean, that's the main thing, is, is, is those people definitely had concern. And until I find out if those, that area has, is okay with this particular location, until then, I'm not comfortable with it. Because there was a lot of families that came out and spoke that day. There'd be at least 18. That's a lot.
Where is the location? It is at the, their current location, I guess that's Third Street. It's behind the building there, kind of, I guess that would be south of the current building, on property that they own. Is that correct? Am I correct with that location?
Yes, sir. It uses the current address of the existing women's shelter, 507 South Third Street, and it will be, be built on that vacant lot next to the women's shelter. It will actually encompass the women's shelter when construction is completed.
Thank you, sir. For the record, we do need you to identify name and address, please.
Yes, sir. I'm Hayner Carter. I'm president of Outreach Ministry Incorporated, and I live at 831 South Franklin Drive here in Sanford.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
I did, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lovick, comments?
Not good, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
Ah, yes. I, I think with anything like this, there's always pluses and minuses. I think of our efforts that we make to build new subdivisions next to areas where the property is older, and there are people that are living in that area don't feel comfortable with the higher density buildings, et cetera. Yet, we go ahead and we push against that and recognize that growth is important. There are needs that have to be met, certainly with more affordable housing, et cetera. And although it's not a perfect world for everybody, we go ahead and we push through in the interest of the county as a whole. Certainly, as I look at this population that we're trying to help, improving their lot and giving them hope has a tendency to improve the county as a whole. And although it may be regretful that it has to be somewhere, there is a, a women's shelter there right now, and it's functioned well, and it's been managed well. In general, when we talk about these kinds of issues, I think it's important to lay down the reasons why it's important to go there. What, what, how impactful is it for our county? Who are we actually helping? And first, I, I would mention that the North Carolina Constitution recognizes the responsibility of government to help care for the poor, and it states in Article 9, Section 4, that beneficent provision for the poor, the unfortunate, and the orphan is one of the first duties of a civilized and Christian state. There is a moral mandate. Second, this motion significantly leverages the funds of Lee County. We're being asked to contribute $350,000 for a $2.1 million project. I would suggest that that's a pretty attractive deal, at least financially. And third, and this is probably the most important to me, the nonprofits who will be utilizing this property have provided resources to our community for years. They are professional, frugal, and compassionate. We can have confidence in our investment will return significant positive returns because of those people. This faculty, this facility will allow a coordinated approach to not only assisting the homeless, but this is the important point, but giving them the guidance, help, and hope needed to restore them as more productive citizens of our county. So, with those kinds, with those kinds of reasonings, I'm encouraging the commissioners to approve the, the motion.
I, I don't think.
Thank you, sir.
You know, we're talking location, but, I mean, the county really does a lot. We've gone this, over this numerous times, how many, how much money we spend on, on that area. That's, that's without, that's without question. My own concern is, you know, the city said they were going to do the whole thing regardless. They're just asking us for help. Not that they wouldn't do it, and it wouldn't be done anyways, so.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, sir. I think in light of the generous donations from the private sector, one point whatever million, that, that our board should at least kick in three, whatever the number is, 300, 315, 350, whatever the number is, this is our chance to contribute to the homeless population without owning a building, to contributing to the services, and not year after year funding. That's my understanding. I don't think we should get in a, a back and forth with the city because they didn't do something for economic development. I think we need to do the right thing and vote in favor of this project.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lavalley?
Well, I know OMI does amazing things, and I've, I think it's a, a great endeavor, and I'm, I think it's wonderful when community citizens step up and see a need and contribute to their community. So, me, Arianna, I, I totally support the homeless shelter, but I take a conservative fiscal approach to funding, and I recognize that our local government, we're, we're mandated to fund certain things, we're, we're responsible for certain things, and we have to fall in line with what we're responsible for, and the private sector's taking this on, and I commend them, and I'm, I'm excited for that. But I, I just don't see local government getting involved in that, and I think that it's, it's an issue when we do. So, I have to not support us funding it, although I support the principle of it, and I support the shelter coming in, but I don't support local government being a part of the funding.
I hope that this doesn't stunt continued private donations.
Yeah.
As it should be.
Excuse me, Commissioner, can I, I could?
I'm hoping this doesn't slow down private donations that are coming in, as it should be. I mean, that is, that is our civic duty, personally.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm happy that the private sector has taken the position they've done. This provides OMI an opportunity to apply for and hopefully receive grant funding, and in doing so and getting their shelter up, they can continue to seek grant funding for the program. It is similar to, many years ago, we had a deal with Parks and Recreation that if a group raised, they needed $20,000, they raised 10, the county would match the 10, and that program worked well for, for a while, quite a while. And I see this no different.
I wish to cede the chair to the vice chair, so I can make comments.
Okay.
Madam Chair? First, I wish to commend the undisclosed donors who have put their, their money forward in honor of Mr. Warnham. We all can agree he's done wonderful things for the community in establishing his business with this support to the Outreach Ministries and their efforts to build a homeless shelter. I do commend Outreach Ministries for taking on the challenge of aiding the homeless, but as for asking the county taxpayers for matching funds to supplement the donation, sets a precedent. The county already provides services to homeless through the Health Department, mental health services, social services, COLTS, funding of school facilities, and unfortunately, the Sheriff's Department, as some of the homeless violate the law. I attended the city council meeting when they held the public hearings for the shelter. The overwhelming comments opposing the shelter were the neighbors who had serious reservations. The only neighboring property owner who supported the shelter lived in Greensboro. I surveyed the internet searching for homeless shelters in Chatham, Moore, and Harnett Counties, all of whom border Lee County. All three county searches referenced Bread of Life Ministries of Sanford, and one county search listed Outreach Ministries, also located in Sanford. Sanford police officers have told me personally that they have witnessed Chatham Transit dropping off homeless in front of the railroad house here in Sanford. Once we've established the shelter, it will be a relief valve for our neighboring counties and a magnet for the homeless. I do recall a great movie line, "If you build it, they will come." Madam Chair, I call the question.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. And all those opposed?
No.
No.
I believe the vote was?
Four, two, three.
Four to three.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I couldn't hear. But I heard, but I couldn't understand.
Yes, the vote was four and three in favor.
Thank you.
Yes. I hand it back.
Oh, ceding back the chair. Thank you.
Yes.
Alright, managers report. Financial report. Ms. Mentor?
Good evening. You have before you in your agenda the financial report for the month of January 2022. As I remind you always, the sales tax run three months behind. Tax collections as a percentage of the budget through January 2022 are just 0.11% behind the same time period last year. In reviewing expenditures, the percentage used target is 58.33. As I often caution you, many of our departments on your schedule show that they are ahead of that. That's because we have to include encumbrances for the entire year. If you exclude the encumbrances, we only have three departments that are over at this time: Strategic Services, Court Facilities, and IT. Strategic Services is overdue to maintenance contract, contracts. Court Facilities is overdue to the purchase of furniture for the new jury room, and IT is overdue to the annual maintenance contracts and the purchase of equipment. Any questions on the financial report? If not, you also have the sales tax reports through the collections through November of 2021, and as you will see on those, we are well ahead of our budget at this point. We have already hit over half of our projected budget through five months, and we are looking at about 15, 15% growth over the previous year. And I'll go ahead and tell you that last week, we got our numbers for December, and we hit $2 million in collections. Actually, we're a little over $2 million in collections, which will be, is the first time we've ever hit that type of number. So, December was a good month, and I'll bring you the full report at the next, when I do the next monthly financial report.
Question?
Yes, sir.
What costs, what increased costs are we incurring on our fuel?
I will let Dr. Crumpson answer that one, because I have not been here.
Yeah, we, we paid for diesel this past week, $3.89 a gallon. We budgeted about $2.10 per gallon. So, we are making adjustments now, as we speak, and we're doing a little bit better on the gasoline. We're probably only about a dollar over per gallon right now compared to what we budgeted. But we have everybody doing conservation measures and trying to save fuel and save expenses in other areas to cover the overage. So, right now, I think we're doing alright. But that's, that's really it, and then, you know, most of the, any of the other increases that we've had for goods and services, we kind of already had forecasted that in the budget. We had a little fudge factor in some of our projects, and so, right now, we're actually doing pretty well. If you looked at the financial statement year-to-date, we're, you know, a million dollars ahead from, compared to last year, revenues over expenditures. So, we're not, we're not in panic mode at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Thank you.
Thank you, young lady. Update on the Magnetti Marielli site?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I needed to update the board on our efforts to remediate the hazardous waste permit on the, on the site. So, as you remember, the board gave me authority to spend and then report at the next meeting. So, year-to-date, we'd already spent $18,371.25 with TerraQuest. I had, I had added another $35,173 for drilling, sampling, and lab work around the buildings. That lab work has come back, and at least from the fuel soldering tank issue looks very favorable for us, and our consultant has been meeting with DEQ, and there's a plan being developed that may not be quite as bad as what we had expected. That being said, we still have to do $11,150 for semi-annual sampling, and then on Friday, I had to approve $7,500 for additional sampling for another contaminant that was in the testing that was shown high. That, that contaminant is arsenic, which is in our, most people don't know it, but arsenic is natural in, in our community. It's in the ground, and so, there's a, a request from DEQ to do additional testing and sampling, just to make sure that those levels are normal for the site and that nothing came from the plant to do that. So, we should be able to move probably a little bit faster than what we projected on this, and I'll know more in a couple weeks when I give another update to the board. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the manager regarding the Magnetti Marielli site update?
Dr. Crumpson, the semi-annual sampling required, was that because of the current certificate?
Yes, sir.
So, it's not going to go on forever, is what I'm saying?
We hopefully, it will end.
I got you.
Does Mr. Moore want his name tagged to it before or after the waste is taken care of?
That's a good question. We have talked, we have talked about removing the Morelli signs from the building, but have not spoken about putting new signs up yet, so we probably will wait a little bit. But if, I know that some of y'all did the tour. The building looks even better. Saw some pictures today, and some of the, the metal that was in the ceiling that you saw hanging down is now gone, and... And it looks really, really good. So we're going to turn over a fine building to the Community College when we get everything straightened out.
Any other questions of manager regarding Magnetti Marielli project? Next item on the list, sir?
Yes, sir. I guess the S-line request falls to me as well, since it's under my, my area. But there's, if the board remembers, there was a, the prior board approved a letter of support for the S-line project. Now there's a new, it's called the RAISE Grant Opportunity, which is a mobility hub planning project. And the grant application is due April 14th, and they need community letters of support for their application. They have asked us for that letter of support, and no funding request is attached. The city is spending $190,000 as the match, and did not ask us for money.
Today.
Today. No, I have a commitment, they're not going to ask us for the money in the application. That's all, sir.
Any questions regarding the S-line?
Commissioner?
What's always concerning is when they do these projects, they never hire engineers to give you the other side. Why is things not feasible? They only hire to show feasibility.
That was a comment. Is there a question in there?
Always just a comment.
Commissioner Lovick, any questions on the S-line? Commissioner Reeves?
I'd like to just have the assurance that a support letter does not include funding, as stated. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sharp?
And it's my understanding that this is not going to cost us anything. It's their study, and they're paying for it, right? I mean, this is what this amounts to.
Yes, sir. The, the study is really being driven by the DOT, and the, the city is the local participant who's pushing the issue. And I've communicated to the city that we believe that, you know, this is, you know, it's a downtown Sanford, Inc. issue, it's really their issue.
Commissioner LaValle?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
I guess one thing that comes to mind is that we just made an argument tonight about cooperation between the, the city and the, and the county, and why some things don't always work out the way we think they should, in terms of our mutual cooperation. But in this case, I, as a person who might get involved in the discussion later on, it's really hard for me to understand how the amount, amazing amount of money that it would take to bring this in, is going to complement the kind of lifestyle our workers have in this area, and whether or not we're going to be able to identify the number of passengers that could help defray, let alone equal, the amount of investment we'd have to make. So in the future, I'm going to be kind of conservative on how we might approach it. Are we to, in, in this discussion tonight, are we writing a letter then from the county, encouraging them?
This will be similar to the previous letter that we sent them, that just said that we, you know, we're, we're in favor of them doing the study, and seeing what the study will show, that kind of letter. It's not to...
It's not endorsing the project.
That's correct.
You can say no later, if you need to.
I got you.
I think we've already told them what we were going to say, no, so. And it's part of their, you know, I guess in their, and I'll send it out to the board, but in their plans, the, the building that they, the Sears Building downtown, behind the old City Hall where the Doce Vito used to be, they have a plan to revitalize that whole area as the train station for that. So the city has big plans down there, and probably a big price tag. I told them that we have other projects that we're doing, and they can take this one.
I even heard today that there's a possibility that the city is advancing the plan to elevate the, the track above some of our streets, because obviously that would create congestion, et cetera. Again, I just can't imagine how much such a thing would cost. But anyway, thank you for the input.
I do have one more question for the manager. If this recommendation or project is not approved, I mean, by us, what happens next?
What, if we don't approve this?
If we don't give them our...
They're going to still submit the application with or without our letter.
Okay, that's whatever.
Yes, sir.
Madam Vice Chair, would you assume the chair, please?
Yes.
I would like to comment. I sat on the TarPO board, and about three years ago, the TarPO board met in Pittsburgh, and the DOT train folks came on down and promote the choo-choo. And I'm aware of the fact that we do have a line that goes from Raleigh to Charlotte. We had a line that went from Raleigh to Wilmington. Well, they suspended that line. So I asked the DOT train folks, what's the profitability of the line between Raleigh and Charlotte? The response I got was simply this, "We provide a service." Think about that. I made a point, and I made a point when we had the same proposal here. I made the point that we do not have the population density, like the major metropolitan areas in the Northeast. You have the Washington, Baltimore, Philadelphia, New York, Boston corridor. Those trains move up and down, back and forth, and they are profitable. It's the other ones throughout the country that don't make money. But this is a state proposal, this is not an Amtrak proposal. So when the state line that runs from Raleigh to Charlotte doesn't show a profit, we're just throwing good money after bad. And I'm just being straight up, travel trains all over Europe, they're efficient, they're fast, they're effective. You get off at the training station, there's a network to get you from there to where your destination is. Most people like the freedom of getting in their car, driving to Raleigh, getting there in less than 45 minutes, parking their car, and going to their destination. I'm not quite sure how many folks in Sanford are going to want to get on the train, stop at all the stops on the way to Raleigh, get off at the main train station in Raleigh, and try to figure out where they're going from there. That's my opinion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I hand it back to you?
No, call the question.
Okay.
We don't have a motion, I don't think.
Oh, no motion. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve that of support without funding.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the letter without funding, without a promise of funding. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Probably show of hands.
Okay, we'll do a show of hands. All those in support, please raise your hand. All those opposed?
If they're going to send a letter, I'd like the letter to discuss that we'd like somebody to engineer the opposite, why it's not a feasible, at the same time. Put that motion in there, if that's okay with the board.
So that's a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we add to the letter, that we'd also like to see the state do a study that shows the, you know, has an engineer firm also do a study, whether or not this is a feasible thing. Exact opposite of what they're looking for.
Any questions of the motion?
You're asking DOT to provide that?
Well, they're going to do a study why it's feasible, and the engineering people always give you that, that's what they do in Raleigh. It's one of the biggest lobbying areas in Raleigh. But they never do the exact opposite. Why shouldn't we do this? You know, why don't you ask an engineer firm to engineer why this is not a good project to do? Engineer firm will give you what you ask for. I was asking that they look at both sides, not just one side. Because they're going to come down with their recommendation, yes, they always do. The question is, has everybody looked at the opposite, done a study?
Dr. Crumpson, didn't DOT set up a committee of mayors across the, on the...
Yes, sir.
Have they provided us any information, that committee, either one of you know?
It hasn't come from the committee. What we've been getting is from the city.
I agree.
But I don't think we have any data or any reports that have, that the mayors have put together jointly to come back to us. I think this study has a lot to do with what they will send back.
I'd like to know what they're talking about now. Has nothing to do with the motion, your motion at all, but I would like to know if they have something that they can share with us right now.
I can get that from Marshall.
All right. Thank you.
That's always good information to get ahead of time, too.
Any questions or discussion about the motion?
Clarification. Was this an amendment to the original motion, or a new motion?
Yes.
Amendment to the original.
Point of order, didn't we pass the original motion?
Yes.
Yes. I'm just asking to, you're going to send a letter, I'm just asking to add to the letter.
I believe it's appropriate to just make a new motion, but...
Okay, new motion's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do a show of hands. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, or raising a hand, thank you. Any opposed? Okay. Any other comments from our manager?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Lovick?
Had the opportunity with a couple of commissioners to attend the men's school ribbon cutting. I didn't get a chance to attend the dedication, but one of our commissioners, they had a dance team out there, and I told him I was going to call him out on this. His head moved a little bit, I won't tell which one it was, but no, it was good. It was very good during the men's school ribbon cutting. Great facility, we got a chance to tour the building. And I grew up in that area as a small child, and when it's King's Department Store, from what they had made that. And I mean, that's a good, good thing for our private and our county and city sectors going in and helping out with things that, so good times there, and good things with some of our buildings that helping out making up those. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, ma'am. Something I've talked about before in the past is the trash pickup on Sunday. I'm getting calls again, and just curious as to if we're going to start that back? We just need to tell people, no, we're not? What's the problem? And I sort of address that to the county manager, and guide me through that.
Well, if it was left to me, the answer's no. We would not open back open on Sunday. And we have a capacity issue based off of volume. So the volume has grown so much, demand convenience centers, since the transfer station's not open on Sundays, we don't have anywhere to take trash. So if we collect it, it fills up the bins and ends up going on the ground. And we can't be putting trash on the ground at our man convenience centers. DEQ frowns on that. So it's simply a function that the landfill's closed on Sunday, so the transfer stations are closed on Sunday, and now the man convenience centers have to be closed on Sunday.
Just forwarding the complaints.
I understand. The only way to address the complaint is to build man convenience centers that are larger, and that will hold more capacity. And that's what we're trying to do. We, you know, we're going through a process right now of evaluating sites to move Wilson Road and Colon Road right now to alternate locations that would be larger, where we could stage more containers, have more capacity, and be able to hold more trash. So until we get through that process, I just don't think we can open on Sundays without having a big mess at all the centers on, on Monday morning.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do want, I do want to say Happy International Women's Day tomorrow for all the ladies in the house. I know I'm slow, but I got that.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have notes from the 4 March '22 telephone conference that I had with the Sandhills LME Finance Director, Anthony Ward, and Jerry Earnhardt with Daymark Recovery. The discussion was regarding a concern raised by Commissioner Reeves on February 21st, 2022, during the commissioner's comments. A patient with an involuntary commitment order was taken to Central Carolina Community Hospital for admission. Commissioner Reeves wanted to know why the hospital subsequently released the individual without sending them to a treatment facility. The very next morning, I, I sent your concerns to Ms. Victoria Witt, and they've been working on it, investigating to determine the situation. And this is what we found out. The social worker at CCH looking into the situation referred to three separate patients brought to the hospital emergency department with involuntary commitment orders. All were compatible and required law enforcement on-site. The emergency department attempted to find a facility with a bed to send the patients. Combat of patients are difficult to place. Once they were de-escalated with medications, they no longer needed the IVC and were released. Mr. Earnhardt briefed the county attorney on the process involving IVCs. It's not necessary that law enforcement stay, as it is a county policy, and varies county by county. The emergency room is capable of handling IVCs. Misinformation at the hospital is no one reached out to contact the hospital regarding the circumstances, involving the circumstances with this particular involuntary commitment. Hospitals are strictly required to follow the 1986 Emergency Medical Treatment and Active Labor Act. An IVC can only go to another level of care that treats involuntary commitments. I mentioned that we had our behavioral health urgent care facilities. That is considered a lower level of care, so I was incorrect in stating that they were able to go there. But they are considered a low, lower level of care. Behavioral health urgent care facilities are intended to divert patients from the hospital emergency departments. Patients during the daytime operations can be taken to the Daymark facility. Involuntary commitment Daymark tries to find a facility to send the patient. As a last resort, they are taken to the hospital emergency department. Mr. Ward and Mr. Earnhardt described levels of care involving hospitals and behavioral health care, urgent care. Hospitals are a higher level of care, and the BHUCs, our facilities, are considered at a lower level of care, as I stated earlier. The IVC can start with a magistrate. The IVC is issued if an individual is in danger to themselves or others. A pickup order is issued. They are taken to a facility to evaluate during daytime hours, and emergency departments after hours. They are found, they are assessed in order to find a bed or released. Hospitals can initiate an IVC through a magistrate, but still needs a pickup order for the law enforcement. Emergency certification, hospitals can determine by bypassing the magistrate, and they can call local, excuse me, law enforcement to keep in custody at the hospital. The Facility-Based Crisis Center in Ashboro has 16 inpatient beds. The Facility-Based Crisis Center in Davidson County has 16 inpatient beds. Individuals served in the Facility-Based Crisis Centers setting are served for an average of five to seven days. The Ashboro facility also has the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Facility that includes 23-hour chairs. Those are not beds, as they are not intended for more than 23 hours of service. The BHUC offers short-term triage, assessment, and referral to other services as needed. Sometimes that includes a referral to the 16-bed Facility-Based Crisis Center. Sometimes after de-escalation of the crisis, that includes a referral to outpatient services for medication management or other follow-up care. If the patient in the BHUC becomes agitated, they are sent to the hospital emergency departments. We discussed a possible presentation for the April 29th Sandhill Center Lee County Breakfast, and the site to be announced is yet to be determined. But I invite each and every one of the commissioners, staff, and any citizen interested in participating. I recommended that a more in-depth discussion, perhaps a flow chart to illustrate the process. This would be an ideal setting for, as all of the key players within Lee County are present at this breakfast. And as such, one can associate with each other's responsibilities and make face-to-face. And that was my recommendations, and I'll present this tomorrow night at the board meeting. Any questions? Any questions?
Can you tell me why Daymark does not have a 24-hour person on call?
I can find out.
I think they just have a crisis.
They have a crisis response team.
Well, people don't get sick only eight to five.
And just a note on the weather. Where did I do that? Oh goodness, here it is. And of course, the National Weather Service, North Carolina's 2022, I mentioned earlier, with warm weathers, excuse me, with warm season right around the corner, so too is the severe weather season, which typically includes the months of March, April, May and June. Now is the time to prepare. Be sure to visit the weather.gov warning series. I'm not gonna give you the, just do a search on the National Weather Service regarding North Carolina's severe weather preparedness week. And of course, everyone should be able to inform themselves, their coworkers, partners, families and friends. And every school, business, workplace and family across the state is encouraged to participate in the statewide tornado drill. And of course, you'll see all the alarms coming down and then the, there's an actual severe weather occurring on the morning of March 9th, 2022. If there is, the tornado drill will be postponed. The alternate date is Friday, March 11th. So be aware on March 9th on the morning. I have nothing further, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Connect?
It's good to see everybody using the parks this weekend. They're very popular. Good, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
Yes, I'd just like to piggyback on what you were talking about, the men's school. It was a fabulous experience, but I think going beyond the actual experience of the celebration, it's important to understand why charter schools are such a shot in the arm, I think, for public schools in general. What Dr. Sean Williams is doing over there is next to miracle, in my opinion. He has 247 students or 243, I can't remember exactly. And his focus is interestingly enough to try to hit a goal of 85% of his student body being children who are not making the grade. In other words, he's looking for students that have trouble with their end-of-grade testing. He's looking for students that have some sort of challenge that requires help in the school. The interesting thing is, in contrast, sometimes we hear in our K-12 situation that we are really challenged with having a high number of students who are low-income minorities, other situations where they have free and reduced lunch problems, et cetera. And in large measure, it handicaps, in their opinion, their ability to meet the kind of standards that we heard about today. It would be interesting, I think, to see an exchange of ideas and an openness maybe to the classic K-12 situation and look closely at what's happening in the charter schools and see if that best practices that we could find would improve our performance and our grades. Again, my hat goes off to Dr. Williams. The challenges that he faced in order to get that school started and the support that he's had from the community is really remarkable and I'm glad that I had a chance to participate in it. And the only other thing I'd like to suggest is that I think, I think the date is April 23rd. There's gonna be a Sanford block party and the people that are organizing that were reminding us that they haven't had one of those for two years because of COVID and that in the past, the commissioners have somehow showed up and got a T-shirt and went out and helped and that they welcome us to be able to be there. So if you wanted to put that on your calendar and you could, I think it would be support to the folks that are trying to organize. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no comments. The next item on our agenda is a closed session. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session per North Carolina General Statutes 143 318.11A4 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business and per North Carolina General Statutes 143 318.11A5 to discuss the acquisition of real property.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I now move we go into closed session. Motion has been made to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now call this meeting closed.